They all are. You gotta play with it. It'll work. Back here, right back here. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Bettendorf City Committee of the Whole Meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 18th, 2025 at 6 o'clock PM. The first item on tonight's agenda is a presentation by our community engagement manager, Angie Sharp, on our year in review from our survey results. Angie, welcome.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to present to all of you tonight. Every six months or so, I give an overview of how Zen City is doing in helping our community engagement efforts, and that includes the twice-a-year community survey that has taken the place of the NCS that used to be done every two years, the last one being done in 2022. So before we jump into that, I'm going to give you our 2024 Year in Review, which includes highlights from the last year and a snapshot of how our social media platforms are growing. Then we'll go over the community survey results and answer any questions you might have. So let's start. I want you all to go back in time, close your eyes with me, and share some of the highlights for the city and the community engagement team. And you may definitely want to keep your eyes closed because January started with snow and lots of it. I hate to bring this up, especially after the jump scare we had on Sunday, but January 2024 was all about snow, the snowiest week on record in the Quad Cities, and our Public Works Department did an incredible job with it. So we wanted to share their point of view with our residents, so we joined them on their route and shared some of their insights in this video. This video reached 31,508 accounts on Facebook alone and was viewed 18,878 times on our YouTube channel. I'd also like to point out that even though this is a five-minute video, which is super long in social media land, the average view duration was two minutes, which is really, really good for a social media video. We definitely told a story with this video, Ron Hoffman in the driver's seat there, but the comments on this video told a story as well about how appreciative people are of our public works crews with the word "thank" being almost as frequent as the word "snow." So in February, the word of the month changed a little bit. The word of the month was Gallagher. It was our state of the city, and we changed things up a little bit for the first time in a while last year. We changed up the present, the room, the presentation, the program. We had more than 200 people attend our State of the City last year, which was an increase compared to previous years. And even though I know this is a 2024 review, I can confidently tell you we had close to 300 people at the mayor's State of the City last month, forcing us, as you saw, to use the entire ballroom. So a great event, letting people know about all the things happening across our city takes a lot of work, but it's definitely work worth doing. In March, the budget was a major conversation in 2024, and we had Zen City help us keep an eye and ear to the conversation happening on social media with conversation summaries that I send to you all twice a week. And full props goes to IT, which created a property tax calculator that still lives on our website today that residents can use to look at the estimates for their property taxes for the upcoming fiscal year at bettendorf.org/myaddress. Also in March, the Bettendorf Police Department started the expansion of its patch program, which has gotten really, really great feedback. We revealed the first new patch last March, the Autism Awareness Patch, and we are getting ready to start sales of that patch as well as apparel again in the next week or so. In April, we had our Downtown Cleanup, which we do every year with the Downtown Bettendorf Organization. We had nearly 100 people participate in that. Our communications campaign for that just went out last week, and so we hope that you'll save the date and join us on April 16th, 2025. We also started strategizing with our Bettendorf Police Department on our Speed Enforcement Campaign, which included, of course, tons of tools in our toolbox, including the use of the Speed Spots map, which was a Zen City tool that people could use to mark the spot of where they were seeing speeding happen. We received 986 submissions to the Speed Spots map, and now in 2025, we're focusing in on target areas. You can see the graphic there. We share these with the public every single Monday on the Bettendorf Police Facebook page. May was a very, very busy month, especially near the Plex. We broke ground on one project, Spring Hill Suites, and cut the ribbon on another, Iron T Golf, all within an hour of one another, if you remember. And ahead of those ceremonies, we posted this video on social media, giving a then and now of the Plex area. This was put together by Jay Foster on our team, and of course, the drone was used, which we affectionately call Betty the Drone. We also affectionately call our recycling trucks something different these days, and that's thanks to the Recycling Truck Naming Contest that we held ahead of our Public Works Day last year. 4,446 submissions, and as we all know, a majority of those were in honor and memory of a little boy named Reed. The two other trucks were named Truck Norris and Recyclosaurus Rex. This was really, really fun, and so we are going to do it again this year, and we will reveal what we're naming very soon. I can't tell you when just yet. The month of May rounded out with the start of, of course, construction season in Bettendorf and a major project, which was the Chris Wells Street Rehabilitation Project. This project was one that we actually set up a specific list on our Alert Iowa for. That way, if people wanted updates on just that project, they could opt into that list and get texts and emails sent directly to their phone or inbox. This was in addition, of course, to all of our other communications tactics. Jay flew Betty over this area throughout the entire project and then put together this time lapse for the mayor's State of the City this year. And finally, we ended the month of May with the first of many for many of us, a phone outage. Another chance to give big kudos to IT, which set up cell phones and phone numbers for all of our facilities within hours of an outage that affected landlines across the state of Iowa. Luckily, it only lasted one day, but what a day that was. June was mainly focused on one thing and one thing only, and that's our amazing summer camps offered by the Bettendorf Parks and Rec Department. Something new we did last year, though, was we encouraged our counselors to take pictures and send them to us, since our team can't be at all four summer camps on every single day of the week all at once. We ended up with more than 2,500 pictures all over those eight weeks last summer. And then something else we posted about that got really, really great feedback was our Staff of the Week. This is something that Parks and Rec has been doing for years, but we've never posted it on social media, and people really, really loved seeing the recognition of these hard-working kids. July was another busy month with all of our Fourth of July festivities. We once again livestreamed the parade on our YouTube channel and Facebook. We also did a lot of work updating the signage that you saw throughout the parade as well as the festival. Then after the holiday, things slowed down for about 17 seconds, and that's when the river flooded. We captured footage of the Mississippi River flooding, as well as our public works crews filling thousands of sandbags. And then five days after the river crested, as we know, we had that EF-1 tornado tear through the first ward. So between these two kind of natural disasters, we had a lot of messaging on our webpage called Be Prepared, bettendorf.org/BePrepared, letting people know about park closures, street closures, special yard waste pickups, you name it. In August, things actually did slow down a little bit, like they tend to do that time of year. We started our messaging about the Spencer Creek Lift Station Improvements Project and continued to update one of our newest webpages, which is bettendorf.org/newgateway. That's all about the Gateway Bridge, the new I-80 Middle Road Interchange, and of course, this project, and a lot of visuals to come for that project in 2025. In September, we welcomed the Class of 2024 into our Citizen Academy. We had 17 very engaged students who visited every single city department, as well as the wastewater treatment plant, the compost facility, the Scott Area Landfill Waste Commission, Scott Emergency Communications Center, and Iowa American Water, all in 48 days. And I cannot thank our department heads and our city council and their teams enough helping make this year's Citizen Academy both educational and entertaining. We had a great time and got a lot of great feedback. We already are halfway full for our Citizen Academy for 2025, and we'll start planning that later this month. In October, we added a new member to the community engagement team, Katie Riches, who is in the booth directing this meeting as I speak. She is an incredibly talented graphic designer. Here are just some of the beautiful graphics that she's made over the last six months. She's also managing our website, and she'll be facilitating our website redesign project with Revise this year. That process starts next month. We're almost there. In November, we continued our Triple Crown streak through the Government Officers Finance Association with our design of the PAFR, or the Popular Annual Finance Report. Pictured here is the latest report that we just submitted at the end of January that Katie herself designed, so I am very confident that it will ensure our third straight Triple Crown. And finally, in December, we kept our community in the loop about all the holiday happenings in the city, which included another wonderful and festive "Tis the Season" for our community seniors. Thank you to everybody in this room who helps make that a success. The following weekend, of course, just seven days later, we opened the Landing Ice Rink, our brand-new amenity, which saw 15,521 ice skaters in its first season. And then we completed the year literally on December 31st, when we announced that Palmer Hills will be celebrating its 50th season in 2025. So those are just some of the highlights from 2024, but as you know, the community engagement team is busy on a daily basis. Don't worry, I'm not going to go through all of these. I just want to give a list and give you a gist of what we are constantly and consistently working on. We are definitely not bored. I promise you that. I do want to make a note about that top bullet point. I am actively taking FEMA classes right now through the Scott County Emergency Management Agency. I have four separate certifications and will hopefully receive one more next Wednesday. This coincides with the council priority to develop an emergency response plan for the city. I'll be working with Chief Sade this year on the communications part of that plan, but I really wanted to make sure I had a lot of knowledge about the National Incident Management System so that I can help as much as possible when we create that plan. And then, of course, before I move on, I want to share that we just hit number 250 when it comes to our weekly mayor's messages. So number 250.
Lot of work, Denise. Way to go.
Aired on March 14th, focused on our now-retired K-9 Ringo, who spent eight and a half years serving our community. So most of the things that you saw on that list are tactics that we organize into what I call communications campaigns. This is an email that goes to my team and then whoever has made the request for a message. Campaigns are usually created when the message requires more than just one or two tactics, like a social media post or a graphic. They usually include a press release or updates to our website, along with all the other tactics that you can see in this email example. This is how many communication campaigns we had in 2024. It totaled 66, so more than one a week. As you can see, really no city department was left behind. Perhaps maybe legal, which I think we can all agree is a win. So how did all of that work we did in 2024 fare on social media? I'll quickly go through this, and then we'll move on to the community survey. So we're looking at January 2024 to January 2025. On Facebook, the city's page grew 12%. It passed the 12,000 mark when it comes to followers. The police page grew 6.3%, the fire page grew 4%, the library page 12.5%, the family museum page 4.3% and passed 14,000 followers. It's our biggest social media platform. Parks and Rec, 20% increase. Palmer Hills, an 8% increase. On Instagram, the library, family museum, and Parks and Rec pages all have presence there and all saw great increases for the year of 2024. On YouTube, the city saw a 50% growth on our YouTube channel. We now have 828 subscribers and a 46% increase in the number of views from 2023 to 2024 to 77,581. So quickly, a note about videos, because that's what people are watching on YouTube. They are still the category where we are getting the highest engagement rates, even more so than pictures, unless it's a dog or a picture of the bridge lit up at night. But this is why we are putting more emphasis on videos. We've added to our toolbox. We don't just have a video camera. We have Betty the Drone. And then Jay also purchased a GoPro back in November, which is giving just another cool perspective whenever we're doing our videos. And it really doesn't always have to be highly-produced videos either. Our top YouTube videos, number one was the Snowplow Drivers, so that was pretty highly-produced. But the number two most-viewed video is this, and it's just a simple livestream of the I-74 Bridge. We have a camera mounted on top of the Isle Casino, and people just absolutely love this view, making it our number two for our 2024 list. And number three is actually another livestream. It's the livestream of the Landing Construction Site. So because we see so much engagement on these livestream cameras, we are brainstorming on where we may want to try to put more. Would it be cool to see one at Crow Creek Dog Park and have dogs, you know, come up and sniff the camera? I don't know how we'd make them do that, but maybe we just shove some begging strips in there or something.
Like a Decker camp, just wherever he goes.
Yeah, there you go.
Good use for the GoPro.
Yeah, exactly. Maybe the ice rink. Maybe people would like to see a livestream of the ice rink. So there are a lot of possibilities out there. We know that these livestreams get really good engagement, so it's something we're planning to explore in 2025. Okay, back to it. The library also has a YouTube channel, and they saw a 51% increase in 2024. They're doing great work there. On LinkedIn, 24% growth. On Nextdoor, 12.5% growth, and on X, 0.4% growth. I want to stop here because in 2025, we expect to see major growth on two of our pages, and that is the police Facebook page and the fire Facebook pages. This is because Denise Enfield on our team has now taken over the management of these pages, first with police in December and most recently with fire. And just to give you a little insight in how well this is working, the police Facebook page has grown 14% in just the last three months. So it's really, really exciting to see what's happening on the police page. If you have not looked at it lately, please do. On the fire side, the video that Jay put together, revealing their new logo, has 19,915 views, and it was posted in February. So we have a great relationship with our police and fire departments. We're doing really exciting things, and we're excited to prove that to all of you in the year 2025 and just really show off all the awesome work that they're doing in our community. We also want to celebrate our growth on Alert Iowa. This has been a great tool for the Scott County Emergency Management Agency. They send texts, emails, even phone calls when there's going to be severe weather or there's an emergency. But in addition, they have a non-emergency arm, which allows cities in Scott County to create their own lists and notify users of everything from Parks and Rec programs to facility closures, garbage and recycling, job postings, road construction. We can create any list we want. As you see, we added two of them in 2024, and we saw a 27% growth in our lists in the year 2024. And it's a nice way to customize our communications with people because they can opt in. It's not something that they're like automatically put into. This is in their control, which I think is really good. Okay, so now we're moving on to the community survey, which, again, this is done twice a year. It's included in our Zen City contract. It's not an added cost. We are on to our fifth cycle of the community survey, after it started in July of 2022, right after I joined the city. And I provided all of you with a copy of the entire community survey report from Zen City. This includes the survey methodology, demographics, all that fun stuff, but for this presentation, we'll just go through the highlights. 417 people took the survey this time around. That's about the average compared to the last four previous cycles. And for a comparison, the NCS that we put out every two years received about 500 responses on average. We start with our overall satisfaction score, which is 77%, and you can see how that compares to the four previous cycles hovering around that 80% mark. However, if we combine the positive and the neutral responses, similar to what the NCS does, our score jumps to 97%. Here's who responded to the community survey in this latest cycle and how they answered the question, "How is the overall quality of life in Bettendorf?" You'll notice a little star next to Ward 2. That simply just means that this group's score is based on a very small sample size and may not be reliable. Here's who responded to the survey, broken down by age, gender, education, and income. And just so you know, Zen City says that any percentage change above 5% is worth paying a little bit of attention to. So we'll dig deeper and kind of look at what other questions and categories they get some responses on. So there are other measures of satisfaction that are asked. One of them is, "How likely are you to recommend Bettendorf as a place to live?" 77% gave a positive answer, and if we combine the positive and the neutral, that gives us a score of 95%. And then the other question is, "How likely are you to be living in Bettendorf five years from now?" An increase of 9%, which is worth noting. And when combined with the neutral answers, that gives us a score of 87%. Now we move on to our community characteristics. I broke it down into two slides, so it's a little bit easier to see. But again, don't worry about any changes unless they're above 5%, and we don't see any of those here. Our highest positive answers came from sense of overall safety, quality of parks and recreational amenities, and overall cleanliness and maintenance. When you combine the positive with the neutral answers, all of our community characteristics score 83% or higher, with the top marks going to quality of parks and rec amenities and overall cleanliness and maintenance.
Angie, do we have any granular information about what, if a person's negative and/or positive, do we have comments or any kind of context on why they would say what they've said?
We do. Yes. That kind of falls into the open-ended questions that we'll get to in just a moment. Yeah, that'll give a little bit more context to maybe some of the responses you're seeing here. Here are the rest of the community characteristics. As you can see, our lowest positive answers came from ease of getting around by public transportation, availability of jobs that pay a living wage, and availability of affordable housing. Though it is worth noting that positive score increased 13% compared to the last survey cycle. Something new to the analysis of the community survey is what's called a change matrix, which really kind of digs deeper into the demographics of the survey, how people are answering it compared to how they answered in the last cycle. So for example, we can see where that 13% positive increase to the affordable housing question came from. Same with the satisfaction question, which saw that 9% increase, but a double-digit increase from Ward 4. And on the other end of the spectrum, who and where may be contributed to a drop in scores for the quality of waste and recycling services. So if I click here, I can show you that you can access all of this on your Zen City dashboard, if it loads. But you'll have access to this on your desktops at your computers. You can go in and look at the change matrix for every single community characteristic. So it's not loading, so we'll just kind of move on. If you ever want help walking through this, I'm happy to do so with you after the meeting tonight or any time at all. All right, now how do we compare to others? I know a lot of people like to see the benchmark data. In your full report, Zen City explains how it chooses our cohort based on geography and demographics, but here are the highlights. The overall quality of life in Bettendorf is 13% higher than its cohort and 12% higher than the national score. So for this graphic and the next ones, I'm showing you're looking for the blue dot, which is going to represent us compared to the cohort, which is the black square, and the national average, which is the gray triangle. Here are some of those community characteristics once again, how we compare to our cohort and the national average. Again, the blue dot represents us. If we're not higher than our cohort or the national average, we're right in the mix. So I think that's really good, to see that we're not lower in any way. Finally, the community survey asks two open-ended questions, which gives a little bit more context to some of the responses. What is your favorite thing about living in Bettendorf, and what's the one thing you would change? Again, this is all on your Zen City dashboard. You can go through and look at all 400 some responses to these questions, and I certainly encourage you to do so because some of them are pretty entertaining. But overall, what is the thing you would want to change the most about life in Bettendorf? The top three are transportation, local government, and housing. But Zen City can even take those comments and break them down into subcategories. So transportation, really the pain point, is traffic. Local government, code enforcement, and housing, it says housing costs and housing overall. And when it comes to your favorite thing about living in Bettendorf, the top three are safety, community, and recreation. So the subtopics for those under safety are safety. Under community is community and neighbors, and under recreation, people love our parks. So that was a lot to get through in about 23 minutes. You all will have a copy of Zen City's Year in Review, as well as the full community survey report at your spots. I'll also email you a copy of this PowerPoint and a spreadsheet, like I did last year, of all of our social media numbers that are broken down month by month. And then, of course, I'm always available to sit down with you and go through the nitty-gritty of things, and you can watch me geek out about numbers and analysis and things like that. So for now, are there any questions or comments?
Questions for Angie? Yes, Scott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would say, when you joined in like June of 2022, we had some goals of like, "Why can't we, you know, do this? Why can't we do that in terms of communication?" And now I think there's so many different points of engagement that it's like, "How does she do this? And how does this staff accomplish so much?" Because it just continues to layer up, and I think it just shows the strategy and the vision, and, you know, everyone had to be patient while it kind of got figured out. But, boy, it's really amazing. And I do give you kudos, too, for the social media and engagement is a lot of times a double-edged sword. And I don't see us arguing or debating, and I think that the information that's out there seems to stand on its own accord. It's like the people have maybe become more accustomed of hearing from the city, and there's some reasoning behind seeing the growth of the city and what's being done and why it's being done, because the information is provided so effectively. So that's really cool, and it just translates, I think, into this higher satisfaction because the more we can get someone to engage and pay attention and understand, the better satisfied. And also, we're able to hear from them more effectively and maybe govern a little bit differently. I guess that's why I'm so interested in, okay, what are they saying? But more importantly, like, why is that how they feel? So in case there's something we can do different or better, it's good for us to hear that. So thanks for all your hard work.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, kudos. Yes. Jerry.
Thank you, Your Honor. Great presentation. Thank you very much, Angie. I do have a couple of questions. One is on the Speed Spots. You indicated a significant response on that. Are we going to continue to do that or have another campaign on that?
We certainly have kind of transitioned from using that data collected from the Speed Spots map into, you know, what we're doing weekly now and kind of focusing in on different areas and kind of, you know, finishing the circle, I would say. You know, you put in your submissions, we listened, and now here we are kind of targeting these different areas. I don't know if Lieutenant Scott wants to add to that.
Yeah, we're also looking and working with another software company, too, that's helping with overlaying some of that traffic data to help us fine-tune some of those parts. We're not quite there yet, but that coupled with our enforcement and our officers going out and targeting those areas, I think we're seeing some positive impacts.
Thank you. And then a second question is, on those negative comments you get, do we follow up with those if they leave a name and address or phone number?
Absolutely.
We do? Okay.
Yeah, are you, I mean, I'm assuming you're talking about negative comments on the Speed Spots map or negative comments on social, which in both cases, yes.
Yeah, yeah, negative comments on social is what I was getting at.
Yeah, absolutely. Denise does a really great job of monitoring all the direct messages that are coming through as well as comments. She'll take screenshots, send them to department heads, make sure that we're getting answers as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Other questions? Yes. Greg.
Thank you. Really great. I'm enjoying Zen City a lot. I appreciate your work. Back in October, Zen City put out a Communications Best Practice on Bond Measures. And what I found interesting in that was that 30% of the information on average that a resident will get about bond measures comes off of the Nextdoor platform. So I wanted to just highlight that so that when we start to push the campaign and gather the citizens to help advocate that Nextdoor be used fairly substantially. But then on a less happy note, looking at the Zen City Community Survey, Ward 3 has only 71% satisfaction, lowest of all the wards. Should I take from that that the council member in Third Ward is not doing such a good job?
That's probably a...
Somebody makes communication can be a bad thing.
And are there things that the council member or the city can do to try and address when at least a ward-specific problem appears to exist?
I think when you, and you and I can walk through it, when you go into, you can, and like the open-ended questions.
I've gone through that several times.
Yeah, you'll be able to go through and see like the comments that are specific from Ward 3 respondents, and maybe that gives a little bit more of a picture to maybe why. I will also say that we're finding out that voting neutral might as well be positive, especially even when it comes on social media, too. Like sometimes people don't feel like they need to like or love or comment or share. They're just like, "Good, keep doing what you're doing, Bettendorf." And they don't necessarily engage or react in that sort of way.
I think that is an important distinction, too, Your Honor, is that that neutral, as we look back on these National Citizens surveys, they included the neutrals as part of the positives. So when you say 71, I don't know what the neutral rate was there, but I think that probably pulls it up, Greg, so that you're probably, you may still be the lowest appreciated alderman, but your numbers...
That's often the case in the horse show.
But, yeah, that's right. But I think if Angie pulls up that, you can probably see the neutral number next to it, if it's there.
Yeah, if you want to throw that up on the screen, Katie, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
So I wouldn't take it as... Looks like it's not loading. At any rate, I wouldn't take that personally.
And remember, the cohort, the national average, still, you know, really, really good compared to our, with our benchmark data. I think that's a really good indicator of how we're doing, especially in this climate.
Any other questions?
Can I just make one comment on Greg's point about the 30% for the bonding? You know, as we're going about the police department referendum...
You know, as we're going about the police department referendum work, we are, we engaged Bray in their contract, had a citizen survey or a survey component as part of their contract, which is going out to all the households, and we've talked to you about that. We do plan to work with Bray once that survey mechanism is back, how we then move forward prior, you know, between now and the period of time where the council declares the referendum to doing Zen City work and surveying folks there so that we've got the traditional mailer and then some Zen City reporting as well, so that we get feedback from both those arenas as we get ready to make that move forward towards the referendum. So we will be taking your advice and doing that as well.
Yeah, while the community survey only comes out twice a year and is done by Zen City, we can create our own surveys at any time, which is a really, really great tool. We use that quarterly for our parks and rec amenities. We can create forms for people to sign up. We're doing that for some open houses that we're going to have with the police department. So go sign up if you're listening. We also, if you wanted to bring my screen back up, Katie, we do have the opportunity to create projects for... Of course, it's not going to load for me. But we can create any projects we want, put in certain search terms, which will pick up the conversation. This is how we did the budget last year when we were sending those conversation summaries. But we have one, yeah, for public safety, for speed enforcement, for the Gateway Bridge, winter operations. But we have one usually for, there it is, right there, is Police Station referendum. We try to look at the strategic plan. What are some of the ones that we want to make sure that we are following in case, you know, we can't have our eyes and ears on everything on social media? That's why Zen City is such a great tool in our toolbox. But as that survey comes out and some meetings happen, we'll be able to give a good summer conversation summary to everybody a couple of times a week or as often as you would like it. So we'll be keeping a very, very close eye on that.
Beck, another?
Just to follow up on this conversation, Your Honor. The screen that Angie just put up showing Third Ward dissatisfaction in various levels, one of that had to do with the ability to find jobs that provide a living wage. When the city starts doing economic development projects or continues to do those, it might be helpful to be able to highlight the impact on employment and the wages that those positions might generate as part of the package, just so that we can say that we are looking at the information that's being given and attempting to address it.
Yeah. Good thought. Jerry?
Now, thank you, Your Honor. On this same chart here, access to quality healthcare services for Ward One. I will be interested in watching that number to see if it goes up now that University of Iowa hospitals and clinics have opened their urgent care facility up on Lincoln Road.
Lisa, any questions? Or Nick?
Nope.
Okay.
No, great presentation, Angie. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you both. Anything further for Angie? Thank you, Angie. Great work. We appreciate you and the team's work. We're looking forward to the strategic communications that they'll be putting together with EMA and our folks in police and fire. Take a look at the agenda for 7 o'clock, please. Anything on the items to appear this evening? Any council member has a question about it this time?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir. Scott?
I've asked in the past if there are these forest covers and the tax exemptions and so forth, if there aren't objections. It seems like those go through pretty cleanly. If there would be merit for someday putting those on the consent agenda, unless someone wanted to pull an item off. But it just seems like, maybe there is an issue with one of these. But it just seems over the past several years, it's been a kind of rubber stamp and just throw that out.
Same two properties.
We do have public hearings associated with both of those, so we typically have the resolution to follow that.
And that's been fairly recent. I don't know, several years ago, we added a step. And I guess I'm just wondering if there's merit for the step to continue. I guess this may be a better way to frame it. Thanks, Your Honor.
You bet. All right, hearing nothing else, let's move to the consent agenda item. Is there any item on consent? Any council member would like to discuss or ask questions about it this time? Okay, hearing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Our consent agenda is approved. Do any council people, person, any singular council person have something to add to tonight's agenda? Wow, that was tough for me to get out. Yes, we're going to go Greg Adamson, then Greg Jager.
Not actually adding anything to the agenda, but are other people as confused as my wife and others that I've talked to about how to maneuver out at the TBK?
The roundabouts?
The roundabouts and signage and you need to turn here to get to Middle Road. And is it, can anybody look at that and see if maybe some signage or...
The road sides are up. You can see those, but...
Something like an eighth of a mile away, where you'd have more time to see and understand and react.
Maybe that's not an issue, but I've heard that from quite a few people.
Okay, thank you, sir. Greg Jager?
Thank you, Your Honor. Two quick thank yous and a question. Last week, I received several phone calls about wild animals apparently acting territorially and along the rec trail by duck crick between Devil's Glen and Halcyon Park. I brought it to staff's attention. Staff took some swift action and has attempted to alleviate the problem. I'm very grateful for those efforts and for the prompt nature of the response. Speaking of Nextdoor, I saw a Nextdoor post just today, still having coyote issues in that area. So I appreciate the efforts. I hope we can keep going. I don't have any magic solutions, but I appreciate everybody's help. Second thank you goes to our employees generally, Your Honor. I was washing my car this last week, and as I pulled out of the tunnel and went to vacuum it, I saw a uniformed officer in a marked squad car cleaning the inside of the squad car, using the windshield cleaner and wiping down the windows and wiping off the dash. And it made me very proud to know that our employees want to take such good care of the equipment that we give to them. I think that's a mark of dedication on our employees, and I just wanted to say I was very grateful to see that. Third thing, Your Honor, is a question for Jason. I'm sure everybody got these little property notices in the mail this last week.
Make any sense?
And looking at the one that I received, it seems to indicate that the city of Bettendorf is increasing taxes by 12.5%. And that was not the way I understood what we were doing. I was hoping Jason could explain a little bit about where the hiccup is. And then Angie mentioned Bettendorf.org/myaddress, which I would really like to highlight about 15 times. If any individual property owner in the city wants to see what's going to happen to their property, they go online to Bettendorf.org/myaddress, put in their home address, and they'll see exactly what happens under our proposed budget. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Jason?
Thank you. Thanks for the question and the opportunity to maybe clarify just what the statement says versus what might actually be happening. Because I think it's, it is a very confusing statement, first of all. And in this particular case, a little bit misleading. These statements are an effort by the state to bring some transparency to local government taxing, tax levy rates and tax dollars. And I think we're all supportive of that kind of transparency. Unfortunately, this year, the notice assumes an increase in assessed value of about 10% for homes. And assessment year '24 for taxes collected in FY '25-'26, it was not a reassessment year. So most homes, if not nearly all homes, are valued the same as they were for the current fiscal year. So this assumption leads to the estimated increase in property taxes of 12.5%, just as Mr. Jager mentioned. But when all actuality, most taxpayers will see an increase of less than 2.5%. And that's really just due to the change in the rollback. The residential rollback increased from 46.3% to 47.4%. This year, the city's not changing the levy rate. So that 2.5% or less increase is just attributable to the small increase in taxable value. But I would just note and repeat what Mr. Jager said, what Angie said in her presentation. Bettendorf.org/myaddress, punch in your address. You'll see what the taxes are next year versus what they are in the current year. I think you'll find that it's about 2.5%, not 12.5%.
And Jason, who controls the rollback lever?
That would be the state of Iowa, sir.
You have no control over that, do you?
We do not.
Also, who controls the assessment?
Well, that's County Assessor's Office.
We have no control over that either.
Jesus. Amen. All right, anything else for the good of the order before we close this meeting and get ready for our 7 o'clock meeting? Nick, Lisa, we're good?
I'm going to sign off and then sign on again.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. I'd like to entertain a motion, or excuse me. We did get past consent. Let's entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We stand adjourned. Good work, people. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 18th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Jager?
Here.
She's there.
We see you, Lisa.
Nauman?
Here.
Sexer?
Here.
Baden?
Here.
We hear you. Thank you. All right, thank you all for being here now. If you could all please rise, remove any caps or headdresses you may have, and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be followed by an invocation given by Pastor Troy Winder of Bettendorf Presbyterian Church. Please remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Troy, please.
Thank you. I can tell by the crowd, there's a lot of contention in the room.
We'll be okay tonight.
It's gonna be all right. Let's pray. Holy One, we invoke your presence here this evening. We ask that your spirit of grace and discernment be in the mouth of each who speaks and the ear of all those who hear. We pray for your will to be done in equity in this place. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Okay, we're at public requests of council. If there's anybody here who wishes to be heard on an item not already on tonight's agenda for public hearing, and we have lots of those tonight, you can be heard by poaching the podium in the back. Please state your name and address. We'd like to hear from you. Is there anybody here for public requests of council? All right, we'll close public requests of council. Let's move to our first public hearing. This is with regard to the 2025 pavement preservation program. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to this?
No, we did not.
All right, let's open the public hearing with regard to the 2025 pavement preservation program. Is there anybody here who wishes to be heard on this item? All right, we'll close the public hearing and move to a resolution for Councilmember Jager, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving the plan specifications and form of contract for the 2025 pavement preservation program. I move approval of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion on this item? An annual program, part of our CIP. And the budget, we've discussed multiple times. Okay, Michelle, please, call the roll.
Adamson?
Aye.
Jager?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palczynski?
Aye.
All right, we have unanimously passed. The pavement preservation program. We'll move to the pavement markings program. You'll recall that we're doing this twice a year now. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to this?
No, we did not.
Let's open the 2025 pavement markings program. Anybody here wish to be heard on this item? I will close that public hearing and move to the resolution. Councilmember Sexer, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving the plans, specifications, and form of contract for the 2025 pavement markings program. I move approval of this resolution.
Second.
Any discussion here? Again, an annual program. Okay, Michelle, please, call the roll.
Adamson?
Aye.
Jager?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palczynski?
Aye.
All right, let's move to our next public hearing. This is with regard to a designation of forest cover for 3,000 Barcelona Terrace, which qualifies as a tax exemption. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to this?
No, we did not.
All right. We're going to open the hearing with regard to 3,000 Barcelona Terrace. Anybody here wish to be heard on this item? All right, state your name and your address, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, my name is Ray Palczynski. I live at 2927 Villa Court, which backs up to the property. And I know I've come down here over the years to support this because I understand that this allows that land or helps let that land sit as it is, which is a forest, and that's great. As the president of our little HOA, we've had some new neighbors come in who got the letter, and I wasn't in a position to answer them as their president as to what this exactly means. So I was just hoping tonight to get a little clarification on what does tax exemption for forest covers designation mean? What, how could I say that easier to our residents to let them understand what that means?
Chris, do you want to help us?
Sure, I'm happy to help. I will try, and I'm always, you know, available to talk to any of these individuals as well. So essentially, this is an Iowa statute that allows for a tax exemption for certain property that is kept in a natural state, wildlife or natural habitat. There are several designations. The one near you is for forest cover. The other one is for forest covers, rivers and streams and stream banks. So it's really property that's kept in a natural state that's not used for economic gain. It has to be a certain size. It has to be over two acres. And if some of those, if all of those conditions are met and the city agrees that this is an appropriate exemption, and then ultimately, the body that decides is the County Board of Supervisors. It is initially said to be, that's appropriately eligible by the Soil and Conservation District. So the county is kind of at the beginning and at the end of the process. The city is sort of in the middle because it is, and this property is in the city of Bettendorf. So the taxes, really, part of them would go to the city. It's really, this particular one has been approved for many years. It's really, this particular one has been approved for many years. So that's sort of the sum and substance of it. But I would also be available to, to talk to any of your neighbors if there are other questions.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And to, for the record, the folks on the street love the fact that we have that as our backyard because there's all kinds of wildlife and whatnot back there, and it's very quiet. We're just hoping it stays that way and doesn't end up apartment someday. So I can go back and share what you just shared with me with the neighbors, and I appreciate your help.
Sure thing.
Thanks.
Thanks, Ray. Great to see you. Anybody else wish to be heard on this public hearing? All right, we'll close the public hearing and move to the resolution. Councilmember Nauman, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have a resolution approving the request for designation as forest cover for a portion of property located at 3,000 Barcelona Terrace to qualify for tax exemption. I move approval of the resolution.
Second. Any discussion here? Okay, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Aye.
Jager?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Pazinski?